Good evening. I called to order the meeting of this meeting of the Gladstone City Council for Tuesday, September 12th, 2023. It is 6:31 PM. The city of Gladstone is abiding by guidelines set forth in House Bill 2560, which requires the governing body of the public body, to the extent reasonably possible, to make all meetings accessible remotely through technological means, and provide opportunity for members of the general public to remotely submit oral and written testimony during meetings, to the extent or in person oral and written testimony is allowed. Therefore, this meeting will be open to the public both in person and virtually using the Zoom platform. The Zoom instructions are printed on the agenda of the meeting. If members of the public would like to comment on an agenda item, either virtually or in person, you were to have emailed your comments to Tammy Bannock at the city prior to noon today. Individuals attending in person may submit a speaker card to the city recorder prior to the beginning of the meeting. Comments are limited to three minutes. The city council also has Gladstone City event announcements during the meeting and business from the audience at the end of the meeting. To speak during either time, virtually or in person, once again, email prior to noon today. Or an individual's attending in person may submit a speaker card to the city recorder prior to the beginning of the meeting. Comments again are generally limited to three minutes. For the past several months, since I was sworn in as mayor in January, I've been beginning our meetings with a statement acknowledging the original indigenous inhabitants of this area that we call Gladstone. I'd like to do something a little different tonight. About a month ago, a resident of Gladstone, Sarah Sanderson, published a book. She got her MFA degree in nonfiction writing about five years ago, has been working on research on a book dealing with some incidents of racial injustice that took place in Oregon almost 200 years ago. I'd like to share some excerpts from that book tonight because I think they relate very well to our relationship with this land and the people who lived here first. It's from a part in the book where she was starting to research, tried to find maybe former members of her family from donation land claim maps. As I studied the donation land claim map of Oregon city itself, my eyes sweeping left and right, I stopped when I saw what was closest to my own house. There, on the bank of the Clackamas River, just down from the house I was then sitting in, some mid-19th century surveyor had carefully drawn several little triangles marked Indian village and several little tombstones marked Indian graves. I had always known, of course, in the abstract way that anyone who owns a piece of North America knows, that the land I currently hold title to had once been occupied by someone else. But seeing those little tombstones took my breath away. It wasn't the way I had always preferred to imagine, that the American Indians with their beautiful civilization had slunk quietly away after the first European contact, and that several centuries later, somebody in my family had rolled into an empty prairie and picked out an auspicious spot to set up shop. No, they were all here at the same time, jostling for position in this land of mild rainy Januaries and glorious blue sky Julies. The night after I found the Indian tombstones marked on the donation land claim map, I walked down to the riverbank with my dogs. I wondered if the land's original inhabitants would even recognize this place now. Just as the little squares on the donation land claim maps represented the incursion of settlers into indigenous land, the right angles on my street demonstrated a way of thinking about land and property that would have been utterly foreign to the land's first inhabitants. But some of the land's original features remain. Some of the trees still grow, not many of the old ones, since the white settlers clear-cut most of them in the 19th century, but a few towering cedars stretched from chain link to chain link, tall enough that they might at least have been saplings back when the clackamas rested in their shade. And the rocks, certainly the rocks were here. The land has been scathed within yards of the river, but at the last second, it tumbles down to meet the water in a joyful rush of unreconstructed rock. These rocks have surely been here this whole time. For 10,000 years, generation after generation after generation after generation of clackamas men and women and boys and girls must have sat on these very same rocks, warming their toes on these very same ledges. These rocks formed the edge of their final village. And as their time in this land was ending, not long before the order came to march 70 miles west to the Grand Rhond Reservation, some clackamas mother with her children might have stood just for a moment where I was standing now. The book is The Place We Make. The author is Sarah Sanderson. I encourage you to read it. Tammy, will you call the roll, please?
Counselor Huckabee, here. Counselor Alexander.
Yes.
Counselor Rieckel.
Present.
Counselor Cook.
Present.
Counselor Roberts.
Present.
Counselor Garlington.
Present.
Mayor Milch.
Present. Let us stand for the flag salute.
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Administrator Bets, do we have any additions or corrections to the agenda?
I have nothing. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. First item is our consent agenda. That includes minutes of the August 8th meeting, approval of July bank balances, budget report for the period ending in July, approval of the July check register, department head monthly reports for August 2023, and approval of a new OLCC liquor license application for the Brew LLC 465 Portland Avenue. And item seven, authorization for the city administrator to sign an amendment for community development block grant program agreement between the city of Gladstone and Clackamas County Department of Health, Housing and Human Services, Housing and Community Development Department. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I will second.
All right. The motion was made by Counsel Alexander, seconded by Counselor Roberts. Any discussion? Tammy, will you call the roll, please?
Counselor Garlington.
Yes.
Counselor Roberts.
Yes.
Counselor Cook.
Yes.
Counselor Rieckel.
Yes.
Counselor Alexander.
Yes.
Counselor Huckabee.
Yes.
Mayor Milch.
Yes, the consent agenda is adopted. Do we have any correspondence, Administrator Bets?
Nope, I do not. Thank you.
Okay. Next in our regular agenda is a report from Clackamas Fire District.
I believe we have Fire Marshal Sean Olson tonight.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
This evening I just have a very short report. Now open up for any questions you guys may have. So this next month, we're shaping up for Fire Prevention Month. The fire district will be busy in broader communities, conducting open houses, mainly in particular here in Gladstone, more annual Halloween trick-or-treat there at the fire station.
Thank you. So we're definitely looking forward to that. We always have an excellent turnout of people and kids. If you guys have been a part of that and would like to come down, please come down because we literally, it's probably the biggest trick-or-treating event that we have in the entire fire district here in Gladstone. So we hand out a lot of candy. Couple things to report. We did have one smaller fire, residential fire, earlier in the month off Clayton Way. It sounded like it was just an accidental bark dust deck-related fire. Didn't turn out to be very big. And we've had a couple of small bark dust fires because of the high heat, low humidity conditions that we've seen over the last couple of months. As we progress now into September, we're hoping that we're not going to have like another high heat, high east winds, low humidities. So far, so good, but we're shaping up to be pretty good. This weekend looks like it's going to be a little warm with low humidity, so we'll be on a little extra alert for fire conditions. But hopefully we get out of this next weekend. We're going to get back into some cooler weather and limit the risk of fire. Other than that, that's really all I have for this evening. So if you guys have any questions.
Any questions from counselors? Counsel Roberts.
I have no questions. I just wanted to continue to thank you guys for the partnership that we have. The preventative maintenance you guys do in the community is outstanding. And talking about the fire prevention month coming up, I'm excited to see what that entails. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
I would second that, say thank you. I know the community. I speak to a lot of members and they're really happy to have you guys. They call you the A team.
Yeah, thank you.
They're happy, happy you're here.
I do like to add too that we'll be at the senior center again October 25th. We'll try our presentation again.
Well, and I'll just add that this week especially, when we're reminded of historical events, we're especially appreciative of our first responders, both fire and police, and all that they mean to our community and our country. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
We made time in our agenda for Gladstone City event announcements, and I understand we have a couple of people who requested to speak tonight. So Tammy, will you call them forward?
Gladstone School District Assistant Superintendent Jeremiah Patterson.
And you want to push that little button and that will turn the speaker on and it'll stay on for you. There you go.
Well, good evening, Mr. Mayor, counselors. Thank you for letting us come to speak with you. Keep track of my time because I'm aware of the.
Oh, it's up there already.
Oh, it's up there already. Perfect. I have with me Ally Fierstein. She works for the school district as the teacher on special assignment for student and staff wellness. And just want to share with you about one of the major initiatives going on at the beginning of the school year and continuing throughout, and to invite you to participate. We've been studying school attendance, regular attendance for quite a while. Before the pandemic, our rate of regular attenders was 75%. That is students who attended 90% or more of the school year. There's a lot of data that illustrates that downriver experiences of students will be dramatically improved if they attend 90% or more of the school year. So in our case, that's 17 school days that a student can miss because of a family event or illnesses and still not be considered chronically absent. Last year, the number was 65% regular attenders, so a 10% change in those four years. And we weren't satisfied when it was 75%. So clearly we've got some lingering effects of the pandemic with us, probably not just illness, but also just emotional wellness. So we studied different approaches and we came up with a model based in Grand Rapids, Michigan, where they decided to expand their efforts outside of the school district attendance team toward a citywide approach with a pretty simple slogan to get everybody on board. And Ally came up with, I had some pretty terrible ideas. Ally came up with Gladstone Shows Up. And the translation of that in Spanish, our most common other language, is Gladstone presente. And so we have, Ally's going to talk a little bit about the T-shirt she's wearing and the signage.
Yeah. So a lot of our efforts were really looking into marketing strategies and trying to figure out ways where this would be something that everyone can be involved in. So like Jeremiah showed the yard sign, we have a pretty planned idea of how we're going to send that message out to the community. We've created these T-shirts that has all of our schools and then on the back it has the our logo, which is Gladstone Shows Up, as well as shirts in Spanish. And we also have created banners that you may already see hanging outside of the four schools in the Gladstone School District. And we have them, we also have posters. Last week, Jeremiah and I went over to our businesses throughout Gladstone and had asked for them to participate as well by hanging up posters in their businesses. And it's really been exciting to see that support.
We have a T-shirt for each of you and the staff as well, and we'll leave that box here. We have a yard sign. If you would like to take a yard sign, you know the city code better than I. So about where to properly place that. And we have that for each of you and then the city can distribute the others as they wish. And we will be inviting you later this week to show up at another Gladstone event. We have a national speaker coming to visit us on October 9th with a message about helping students find purpose. So stay tuned for that. And thank you for entertaining us and presumptively participating in our drive.
Thank you very much. It's kind of a controversial issue, but I think we can get on board with it.
Next is Ralph Mateel.
Push the button.
Okay, Mayor, Council and Staff. Good evening. I'm Ralph Mateel, Gladstone part-time resident, full-time hometown supporter. I wanted to bring attention to the Gladstone, Oregon multi-class reunion that we held last month and publicly thank those of you who are involved. John Schmerber, Chief of Police, who provided positive support and also allowed me to vent after I had a few snags. Darren Canaparoli, I hope I said that right. Public Works Director, who coordinated the street closure, signage and barrier placement. Jackie Betts, City Administrator, who provided guidance and feedback with the application process. Michael Milch, our mayor, who sent a very positive letter to the OLCC in support of the event. Last but not least, Tammy Bannock, Human Resources Generalist, City Recorder. Tammy was critical in providing the assistance to me in getting the application requirements in place. She tolerated numerous requests from me for assistance. Tammy went well beyond in assisting in matters, even though they were outside her regular duties. And then thanks to all the others involved, but I don't have their names. So now I have just a short, fun, cheesy kind of story probably. But during the event, I cruised through the crowd, taking many photos. And I get to witness attendees greeting each other, sometimes after many years or even after decades of having not had any contact with each other. As I was in the crowd, I had a lady come up and ask if I was Ralph, the organizer. So I looked around and I thought, well, the event seemed to be going pretty well. So I said yes. She was a gentleman, or she was with a gentleman, and they both were wearing tags that indicated they were in the class of 1980. She said this event changed our lives forever. And I chuckled a bit. I says, well, that's a bit over the top, but thanks. She could tell I had a slight bit of sarcasm in my response. So they said, no, really, it changed our lives forever. They probably noticed a bit of confusion on my face. And so they explained that last year they attended the event and ended up spending most of the night catching up and in a short time their casual acquaintance and high school memories turned into a lot more. They said their romance began that night and grew. And so now they're a forever couple. And so she went on to explain that they have designated this event as their anniversary and they just wanted to let me know how important this event had been to them and thanked me personally. So I thought, wow, after hearing this, I had a little bit more pep in my step. And I later thought it was important to share with all of you. I know, you know, there you go. You go through your daily grind, closing streets, writing letters, working on insurance documents, providing guidance and support, and you're just doing your job, right? Well, I can assure you that Joe and Linda, Gladstone High School class of 1980, will say you were part of a lot more than that. And sometimes we do all these normal work things, but never get to hear the good, fun stuff that are results of our efforts. So thanks. All of you played a role in the success of this event, and it just reinforces my belief in the concept that it takes a village.
Thank you, Ralph. We always say that one of the strengths of this community is the tight-knit connection between people, including many people who have lived here for several generations, or their families have. Some of that comes through in our school system because children start together in kindergarten and go all the way up through high school with the same groups in the same small number of schools that we have. And that helps families and children all get to know each other and form relationships. And Ralph Mateel does a Facebook page called Growing Up in Gladstone, which includes thousands, I think, of people who grew up here, lived here at one time, and often reminisce and share about the great memories of things that were a part of the city years ago. And they continue to form connections. You can tell it's a very strong, tight-knit community still. You've kind of set the bar high for what we expect at each of our reunions going forward. But we'd love to hear stories like that in the future. So thank you, Ralph. Thank you, Ally and Jeremiah for coming tonight. You can stay for the rest of the meeting if you like, but you don't have to.
Mayor, we do have two more that have signed up.
Okay.
First is Robert Everett.
Good evening. So I didn't make it last month. I did not show up. I was a little tired on that Tuesday and because I wanted to come and again, thank everyone. Thank the council. Thank everybody at Public Works, the Police Department, Jackie, for the festival. I want to also thank you for the kind words you put, you basically stated last month in the closing. It proved to be very popular. I think there were, we estimated, I don't know, anywhere from eight to 10,000 people over the course of just two days. And, you know, like Ralph, I think the ultimate reason we do this is basically not for the long days and lack of sleep and chaos that sort of ensues sometimes, but it's for the gratitude that we get afterwards. It's, that's the biggest thing for me is I've done this for 10 years. Every time I say I won't do it again, and then when it's over, I go, wow, I can hardly wait till next year. So please don't make it next month. Also, so again, next year, we're already planning. Anybody have suggestions? We're certainly open to them. And thank you so very much. I think I saw everybody there and I really appreciate everybody showing up. It really meant a great deal to all of us. Also, this Friday, we are now starting up our monthly bingo tournaments. Is that a tournament or just games? I guess it's games. And they are going to be the third Friday of every month. They're going to be at the Senior/Community Center. Again, they start, basically, we sell tickets 4:30, doors open 4:50, excuse me, and bingo starts at 5:30. I guess I'm going to be doing a little calling at the beginning. Bingo Bill is busy. So hopefully I can, you know, at least come close to doing what he does. So anyway, hope to see everybody there. And it's same prices as last year, $6, $5 for seven tickets. And the food's the same, six for hamburgers, six for alcohol, and pop is two bucks, other drinks. So anyway, anybody have any questions or anything of me? Nope. Alrighty. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Dr. Bob.
Appreciate you guys so very much, but just a lot, gals and guys. Okay, thanks.
And the last one is Nancy Ikestead.
Hi, guys. Is this on?
It is, or it was.
Was.
Light on. There you go.
Why is it red? I'm Nancy Ikestead with the Friends of Gladstone Nature Park. And I'm here tonight to announce a new event that we're going to have in the park. We've in past years done lots of things for plant lovers, native plants, tree huggers, all kinds of things like that. But we have a lot of dog walkers in the park and we've never done anything for them. So we decided that we're going to have the first annual Gladstone Nature Park Dog Fest in the park, October 14th. And it's going to be a lot of fun. I wouldn't do it if it wasn't fun. We're going to have dog Halloween costume contest, a holiday photo booth, some games and prizes. There'll be vendors for canines there and hot dogs and cider. So I just wanted to make sure y'all had it on your calendar. You don't have to bring a dog if you don't have one, but if you do, you're welcome to bring a dog. And we're going to have a whole lot of fun up there. So that's it.
Thank you, Nancy. All right, we move on now to our regular agenda. I'll read through the items that we have. We have a public hearing on ordinance 1524, text amendments to add a new chapter 17.81 annexation to the Gladstone Municipal Code. We have an ordinance 1525 amending the Gladstone Municipal Code chapters 2.0, 2.10 and 2.70, renaming the Gladstone Senior Center Advisory Board and the duties of the board. Resolution 1225, participation in the ICMA/Mission Square 401 Plan. Resolution 1226, adopt a pavement condition index PCI of 71 for the City of Gladstone Pavement Management Plan. And resolution 1227, adopting council rules for the Gladstone City Council. So item 10, Administrator Bets, if you'd like to introduce this for us.
Thank you and good evening, Mayor and City Council. So the city of Gladstone does not have language in the municipal code pertaining to annexation requests. So staff has spent some time these past few months developing policy for you to consider in regards to extending utilities to property owners outside the city limits. It's intended to facilitate efficient urban and economic development opportunities by transferring jurisdiction over property within the metro urban growth boundary from Clackamas County to the city of Gladstone. The city attorney prepared language for the municipal code, and we recently held a meeting with the Planning Commission. So I'm going to have City Attorney Chad Jacobs give a brief overview of the language that's being proposed tonight.
All right, Attorney Jacobs.
Administrator Bets and Council, I'm wondering if we want to, because we're required under the code to hold a public hearing, if we want to go ahead and open the public hearing and do all that before I actually go into any detail of what the language is.
I will do that. I don't have with me a copy of the normal script for that, but I will entertain a motion from Council to open a public hearing on this matter.
Almost.
Is there a second? All right, Tammy. Oh, thank you, Tammy. We'll start with this motion, and if you'd like to call the roll. It was moved by Counselor Huckabee and seconded by Counselor Roberts, I believe.
Counselor Huckabee.
Yes.
Oh, sorry. Counselor Alexander.
Yes.
Counselor Rieckel.
Yes.
Counselor Cook.
Yes.
Counselor Roberts.
Yes.
Counselor Garlington.
Yes.
Mayor Milch.
Yes. So this is a legislative land use hearing. The public hearing on city file TXT-2302 is called to order. And the proposed amendments would add language related to annexation into the city. The order of the business, order of business will follow in conducting this hearing will be presentation of staff report, entry of correspondence into the record, public testimony, additional staff comments, questions from the council. And then we will close the hearing with no further testimony from the audience. And then the council will discuss and make its decision. Any interested person may present testimony concerning the proposed amendments. The public hearing is your opportunity to comment on the proposal before the city makes a decision. We want to hear what you have to say and we want to give you, want you to give us your point of view. Help us to understand why you have drawn your conclusion and how it relates to the proposal. Public testimony for this hearing will be called for in three groups. Testimony in favor of the proposal, testimony opposed to the proposal, and neutral testimony. If you wish to speak, please fill out one of the testimony forms and submit it to the city recorder. I will recognize those persons wishing to speak and any questions should be addressed through me. When you testify, please state your name and address for the record as this hearing will be recorded. If you are participating online, click the raise hand button at the appropriate time and wait to be recognized. If you are participating via telephone dial star nine to raise your hand at the appropriate time and wait to be recognized. Let me ask members of the council, at this time, is there anybody who wants to abstain from this matter or need to declare any kind of conflict of interest? Okay, I see heads shaking, so I believe that's none. All right, now is time for the staff report. So Chad, send it back to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, for getting the hearing started before we go into all that. So as Administrator Bets explained, the primary purpose of the legislative amendment before you tonight is to provide some procedures and some criteria for the city to consider with an annexation request. with an annexation request. As you go through the actual legislative language, which begins on page 10, 3 of your packet, you'll see that a couple of important things. One is that owners may initiate an application for a petition, but we still have to go through the legislative process to, or the quasi judicial process to approve that application. It's not an automatic sort of application. Importantly, in 1781020 is language that you discussed at previous council meetings as far as whether and to what extent the city agrees to provide utility services to properties that are not contiguous to the city, so therefore they, they are eligible for annexation yet. As we talked about previously, we're going to require that the property owner must enter into an annexation agreement with the city in accordance with state law in order to receive that service, and that would allow us to provide services, and then when their property does become to get contiguous to the city, and therefore eligible, eligible for annexation, they would annex at that time. So, that's where that language is from our previous discussions. The additional language in the ordinance you'll see is that there are certain requirements for what someone has to include in the petition, and importantly, what you'll see here is in 1781040, the approval criteria, and that is the criteria that you will look at when an application comes before the city council for annexation, and you'll determine whether or not the particular property in question meets this criteria. If it does, you can approve the annexation. If it doesn't, you can deny the annexation. I think most importantly through this criteria, you'll see lots of references to, you know, various provisions of state law, in addition provisions of the Metro Code, you know, which governs annexations as well, but you'll also see that the approving the proposed annexation is in the city's best interest, and that gives the city some flexibility to really determine whether an annexation is in the city's best interest, to say yes or no that we want the annexation to occur. And so, that's probably the most important language in the criteria in 1781040. The rest of the language is really more what I would describe as housekeeping, making sure that we're complying with the Metro Code, talking about procedures and things of that nature. In addition to the annexation requirements, you'll see on page 10-5 of your packet, two, excuse me, two amendments to existing texts in the Development Code. The first one is relating to fees, and just clarifying that fees are jurisdictional. So, if someone doesn't pay a fee, then the application is not complete, and that doesn't start the, what's, what we normally call the 120-day time clock to, to go through a land use application. Then, the second one is just an amendment that basically says that we will hold public hearings, except if a public hearing is not required by state law, we're not going to hold a public hearing. So, that provides us that sort of exemption, you know, because our code currently requires a public hearing for all these types of matters, and this will allow us to not have a public hearing if, in fact, state law doesn't require it. And then it also adds, as the language for annexations, to include that within the hearing requirements, since it's not. So, that is everything in the, the amendments in a nutshell. As you'll see, beginning on page 10-7, there is the staff report, which goes through all the applicable criteria, including the statewide planning goals, as well as the Metro Code and our own code, and does the analysis as to why this text amendment meets the applicable criteria for approval tonight. So, that is my presentation. I will kick it back over to City Administrator Betts to pick it up from here.
I think that covers everything now. There are a couple of property owners here tonight that will want to weigh in on this. We've been very open with the fact that there's not a lot of annexations that happen in Gladstone, but we do have a few properties that are interested in annexing that, so they will be speaking to that tonight, but then staff can answer any additional questions after the public testimony.
Okay, so, starting on page 10.6, this recommendation and report is signed by the Chair of the Planning Commission, so the Planning Commission has reviewed this and is recommending it to the council. The, the next item in the conduct, conduct of hearing is the entry of correspondence into the record. Jackie or Tammy, do we have any correspondence testimony?
I have no written correspondence.
No written correspondence, okay.
No, we have not.
So, we move to public testimony. Has anyone requested to speak tonight?
We have one that has signed up to speak, and that's Annalise Kiefer.
Okay, so you may come forward. The microphone button is already pressed, so we will be able to hear you. Welcome.
Hello. I just want to thank you guys for how much work this is. Like, I didn't realize what was going to be uncovered when I wanted to hook up to the sewer. So, yeah, thank you. Like, this is a lot of legal and planning stuff that I didn't even think about it, so thank you.
Well, you are one of what we hope will be several people, and it's got to start somewhere, and we need to get our, our laws and rules, you know, in order, in order for this to happen. So, tell us who you are and where you live, in general terms, we don't need to know your street address.
Okay. My name is Annalise Kiefer. I live up on the ridge above the middle school, and there's a funny little island that's not part of Gladstone. We're surrounded by Gladstone, and we're like this weird little holdout, and so we want to hook up to the sewer. Interestingly enough, there are people who are not in the, they're still not the county rather than the city who are hooked up to the sewer. So, there's some interesting things that who knows how that will kind of pan out, but yeah. And it's also cool, because if we're part of the city, I get a vote for you guys. And that's it.
All right. Thank you very much. So, so you generally are in favor of us making these kinds of changes there?
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's great. I think that the more people that we get onto the sewer system, the better it is environmentally, it makes us a modern city, and, you know, septic systems don't last forever, and it's hugely expensive comparatively to, to redo one of those systems, and you lose vegetation, you have erosion issues, there's all sorts of different things that come with having an old septic, or as I have, a cesspool system from 1966. So, being able to upgrade is, is good for the community, and hopefully this gives a pathway for other people who want to modernize their plumbing to do the same.
All right, thank you. That, that gives us a couple of good, good reasons in favor of doing this, so we appreciate it. Staff, the last time we had some testimony on this, in a, well, not testimony exactly, but the last time we heard from the public on this issue in a work session, there was discussion of the fees involved. Can you clarify a little bit what that situation is and what it would be going forward, and i- if we have something already in our city fee schedule?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So, in the city's master fee schedule, there is already an amount set there for annexation for $3,000. This is a land use application process, much like when somebody wants to put in a new business or change the structure of their business, they have to go through oftentimes a design review application process, and there's fees associated with that. The $3,000 that is set, we're not sure if that's going to cover all the city's costs. It is relatively low compared to what most cities in the neighboring area charge for annexations up to what we heard at one meeting, $15,000 from the City of Portland. This isn't a revenue-making mechanism for municipalities. The fee is set because the city has to pay a planner to review the annexation application, and the Public Works Department is involved, administration is involved. There's also other requirements of notification to taxing districts. We've got to get annexation final Department of Revenue legal description of the boundary change. We have to notify Oak Lodge Water Services, Wes, Metro, so there's quite a bit of administrative time into processing an annexation application, and it does take several months to do that. So, we're, we're moving in the correct direction to do this. So, to answer your question, in the master fee schedule, it is $3,000 for the fee, and then there's a sewer connection fee of $235, and then a sewer inspection fee of $100. So, as of right now, if somebody was to put in a complete application to annex to the city, it would cost $3,200 or $335 to do that. We're going to monitor our first application to make sure that we are capturing all of the costs, because cities should not subsidize annexations for that.
And let me ask one clarifying question on that. That $3,000, you, you described it in terms of one individual applying for annexation, but suppose, as the citizen who came forward here, you have this little island of homes where maybe several people in an area that are contiguous to the city and to one another are interested in annexing into the city. How would that fee apply in that situation?
We would encourage the property owners, and if, whether there's two or three, to apply together under one application fee. It's more cost-effective for the property owners. We could process it as one application, and we could get that, both properties done at the same time. We would also encourage that if there were six or seven property owners that wanted to do that. So, there would only be one application fee as long as everything was complete in the application that they submitted.
So, as long as then, in the hearing, the criteria are met that are listed in this proposed language here, 17.81.040. If, if the group of applicants could all general, in, in, in mass, meet that criteria, and the approval could be given for all of them at once, then that could be done in one hearing.
That is correct.
All right, that's helpful to know. Okay, are there other questions from members of the council on this issue? Counselor Garlington, I see your hand up.
Hi. So, the item that you were just talking about, is, is that spelled out somewhere on 040? To, to group an annexation together for fee saves?
No, that's not specifically in the language. That would be something that staff would counsel an applicant on if they were to contact the city. That would be an administrative recommendation that, that Heather, our planner with 3J Consulting, would make to them to do that.
Okay, thank you. That was one question. I have three, so my next one is...
Counselor Garlington, if I could just clarify real quick as well, if you look at 17.81.020, it talks about owners in the plural of real property in the territory to be annexed, may initiate an application. So, that's where that provides authority for multiple owners to do that.
Okay, thank you for that. The, the 17.82, you talked about 120-day time clock. Was that somewhere, and I missed it? Was that spelled out somewhere else? You can just say, yes, it is, and I believe you.
Yes, it's in state law.
Okay, and then on 1794, is there a reason that we have the word generally in there when we also have the word except?
I can't answer that with any clarity. I wasn't the one who actually dropped the language. I think that's probably just a, a, a sort of writer's choice of language, but we could certainly take that language out. I don't think it makes a difference.
I'm, I'm just thinking the word generally opens things up to how you choose to read it, and it already says except, and I'd kind of like to talk about taking that word out, and only because I believe annexation is a really big deal. I mean, you're changing, you know, somebody's position on a map, so I think that if it needs to be done, it needs to be done, and generally needs to be not taken into consideration. That's all. Thank you.
All right, other questions from city councillors? Counselor Roberts?
Administrator Betts, you mentioned that with this specific, with these specific homeowners that have come forth talking about this process, we would monitor it for the, the value of what it actually costs, as opposed to the, did you say $3,335?
Yes, so if we tracked our time and we found out that we only spent $2,000, we would refund them the remainder of that. We're pretty confident that we're under that, but yes, we have the ability to refund if we're not using all the staff time to do that.
Okay, and we can actually track that dollar amount pretty closely?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I think we've had all our questions answered. Is there a motion to close the public hearing on this matter?
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
All right, it's been moved by Counselor Roberts and seconded by Counselor Alexander to close the public hearing, so therefore there will be no further testimony from the audience. Tammy, can you call the roll, please?
Counselor Roberts.
Yes.
Counselor Cook.
Yes.
Counselor Rieckel.
Yes.
Counselor Alexander.
Yes.
Counselor Huckabee.
Yes.
Counselor Garlington.
Yes.
Mayor Milch.
Yes, the public hearing is now closed, so now it's time for us to discuss and make a decision on this ordinance. So, let's have, we'll have discussion first before we make a motion on whether or not to pass. Any comments from city councillors on general feelings about this?
I think it's a good thing we can incorporate, you know, our neighbors.
I think it's a, it's a very thought-through, and to your point, you know, pretty darn quick response to a community need, and yeah, I think it's fair and balanced.
Yeah, I'm pleased with this. I had a number of questions that were all kind of answered inadvertently, and we see the Planning Commission has put their seal of approval on this and has gone through a number of other people, so I'm ready to move forward.
All right, Counselor Garlington?
I would just like to circle back and, on 1794, and ask that it does read, "The city will hold public hearings for all quasi judicial and legislative land use applications except when state or local law does not require a hearing." Again, I go back to the annexation is a big deal, and I, I, as I, I mean, I understand that right now, we kind of have in our head that this, this person, this one particular person and/or small neighborhood, but if something was larger happening in our city, I think it's important that we, that, that, that there is an understanding that we will hold hearings here, and Gladstone citizens will be heard in cases of land, of, of these annexations.
All right, I think when we get to the place where we go to look, look at adopting it, we will entertain a motion for an amendment of that language at that time. Counselor Rieckel, any comments or?
No, I just echo what Counselor Roberts said. I feel like this has been a very thorough process, and I appreciate it, so I'm ready to move forward as well.
All right, Counselor Huckabee?
I'll go along with positive.
Okay. I, I served as Chair of the Planning Commission for a couple of years and served on the Commission too for a little longer, and I know that our comprehensive plan for the City of Gladstone is a very thick document because it includes a lot of amendments of times when properties were annexed into the city. Over the 60s and 70s, when we grew, some of you, maybe even some members of the city council, live on property that was at, at one point annexed into Gladstone through an amendment. We don't see it that happening as often any longer, so it's good that we've looked at this language, I think, and tried to clear it up so that these, what are more likely to be very small annexations are, are made possible. And I agree with Counselor Garlington about the need to be consistent in the way we handle this, not to have it just be an administrative matter, but have it be something where we can be sure that we do hearings where they are required by state law. So, I will accept an amendment, or I mean, a, a motion to adopt the ordinance, and then at that time, I will consider that, an, a motion to amend, part of that language would be in order. So, would anyone like to move adoption of the amendment, that there's some language on page 10-1? Adoption of, I mean, of the, of the ordinance itself.
I will make a motion to approve ordinance 1524, approving a text amendment to the GMC Code to add chapter 17.81, annexation city file TXT-2302, with the proposed change to with the proposed change to chapter seventeen point nine four stating the city will hold public hearings.
All right, so you've incorporated, it's been moved and seconded and that incorporates the change requested by Counselor Garland. So we've got it all in one motion. Any discussion? Chad, have we handled that? Okay?
Perfectly.
All right, very good. Tammy, will you call the roll, please?
Counselor Huckabee.
Yes.
Counselor Alexander.
Yes.
Counselor Rieckel.
Yes.
Counselor Cook.
Yes.
Counselor Roberts.
Yes.
Counselor Garland.
Yes.
Mayor Milch.
Yes, so the ordinance as amended is adopted. Thank you to our city attorney. Thank you to our planning group, Three J Consulting for helping us with this. And thank you, citizens, for coming and presenting your views on it. All right, we move next to item eleven. An ordinance authorizing the renaming of the Gladstone Senior Center or Senior Advisory Board and amending the duties of the board. Staff.
Thank you, Mayor. So as you recall, we just recently changed the name of the Gladstone Senior Center to the Gladstone Community Center. We still have a senior center advisory board that's been doing a lot of work on the proposed, can you guess, name change of their board? And also they looked at the duties and responsibilities of that board to make sure it's going to be consistent with the adopted city council goals in relation to the future vision of the community center. So I'm going to have our community services manager Tiffany Kirkpatrick. And we also have our board chair here tonight to go over the staff report and proposed changes for you.
All right.
Thank you for that.
You can do that from there and then
Yeah.
Then do if you'd like to come forward.
Yes, definitely to go up. I prefer to stay here. Thanks for hearing us tonight. I'm just really grateful to have a really wonderful partner to work with Mindy on everything that the board has been through this spring and summer in terms of trying to reach our goal by, you know, including a multi generational you know, really warm creative center that people feel is theirs to attend. So it's been a really smooth process, actually, since we moved to the chambers, actually. We've gotten a lot of work done very fast. We're officially, like Jackie said, the community center of Gladstone. And I'm also working on our van, which will represent the name of the center too. That's going to be exciting. You won't miss it on the road. And so we're here now very simply to just have the name of the board represent the center. And so we feel the best way to do that obviously is to have the same name. We weren't, you know, it was very quick. I'm going to let Mindy share about that, but we were all in agreeance to a very simple change that reflected the actual name of the center. But basically, we want to look at people that have a certain skill level that they can bring to the board, different ages, coming maybe from the school district or whatever the areas are as we look at new membership. And we have a couple of positions that will be coming up, but we discussed this together as a group and are on the same page that this would help us get some work done that that's necessary and that also represents the face of the Gladstone Community Center. I'm going to let Mindy share a little bit because she took time from her schedule to be here tonight, which was surprising and great. So if you want to add to that.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and councillors and staff for having us on your agenda again tonight. This is just kind of buttoning up a really, really great change, positive change in our community. The Gladstone Community Center, the Spirit of Generations. We have really great plans for expanding services, expanding out into the community, really going for the multi generational aspect of it. Y'all have already seen the music on the green. I mean, we're trying to have some real fun here and it's really great. So obviously renaming the board, we didn't really get too creative with that. We just thought, well, let's make it make sense. And so it was pretty, like Tiffany said, it was pretty quick and unanimous that the board would just be renamed the Gladstone Community Center Advisory Board. And we we are excited about, you know, getting some new members. We do have some people that are graciously, you know, have have put in their time and are moving on to other things in their lives. And so we'll have a couple openings and it's going to be really exciting to see what what kind of new ideas and new energy a couple new board members will bring. And did we want to talk about the the ad hoc? Okay, so one of the things that was suggested to us was because we do have different events at the the community center, the music on the green, we'll have our second holiday market this winter, which is really great. And then, of course, the the community festival we participate in as well. We need some boots on the ground help with these different events and hopefully more, hopefully we'll come up with more. So it was suggested to us that we consider having some ad hoc committees for the community center. And I believe that that's written into the the ordinance change as well. So we hope you will look that over and help us keep marching forward with these really, really great changes and and thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Mindy, and thank you, Tiffany.
Yeah.
Are there, did you want to continue?
I was just going to add that I'm working this week on descriptions, a couple of descriptions for those positions for the ad hoc committee. And it'll be the winter market, like she said, and music on the green. They'll also have to apply and then those will come back to the board and then, you know, a really quick process because we actually need to start working on the holiday market. But I just wanted to add that piece. It's in the works now. It's it's in the hands of the board, which is really helpful. Jackie came to our very last meeting and explained that really well and everybody understood it and there was a lot of excitement in the group to take that. It felt like a weight, actually, because everybody is just so excited to have more help. But we don't have to put them through the process of of being, you know, a permanent member or a temporary sort of long term board member. But they can work on something specific that they're skilled at, good at, and then it's over a committee, you know. So that was what came out of our last meeting. So I I think I'm done. There's no cost associated with this. So, yeah, we just want permission to go forth and do that.
All right. Other questions or comments from councillors? Counselor Huckabee, I believe you are our council liaison to this body.
I am.
Okay.
I am. I had a question on page eleven dash seven on two point seven oh point zero two zero. There is a sentence, third line down, understands the needs of Gladstone area seniors and the general community relative to senior multi generational programs. Was senior supposed to be crossed out there?
It's underlined. I'm not looking at the document. I apologize, Jackie. Is it?
Yeah, I believe that's, I believe you're correct. That should be a cross out rather than an under.
The senior should be a strike through.
Yes. Okay, I'm hoping it is because the multi generational would cover
Exactly.
everyone.
Yes. Other than that, it's wonderful. You guys have been working really hard. I too am really excited for what the community center is going to be able to provide to all of our members of our community.
Yes.
So that's great. Yeah, and even people outside of our community who come and visit, like, it's just great. I love it.
Great, thank you. Well, thanks for considering.
All right, other questions, comments? Okay. On the issue of the ad hoc committees, yeah, we don't expect our advisory boards to do everything. You have an organization that does requires a lot of volunteer involvement and for special events and activities, you're going to draw on people who really want to work on that but don't want to make that long term commitment. So I'm glad I'm glad we've come to this understanding that you all can form these ad hoc committees yourselves. Doesn't have to go through the council for our approval. But you'll be able to get all the volunteers that you need to really help an event or a new a new mission of your organization and the center to to come into being. So is there a motion from a council member to to make this change?
I will make the motion to approve ordinance fifteen twenty five amending Gladstone Municipal Code, Chapter two point one zero Boards, Commissions and Committees Generally and Chapter two point seven oh Senior Center Advisory Board.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, it's been moved by Counselor Huckabee and seconded by Counselor Rieckel. Any further discussion? All right, Tammy, will you call the roll, please?
Counselor Cook.
Yes.
Counselor Rieckel.
Yes.
Counselor Alexander.
Yes.
Counselor Huckabee.
Yes.
Counselor Roberts.
Yes.
Counselor Garland.
Yes.
Mayor Milch.
Yes, I believe the ordinance is adopted unanimously and under our new charter, that is all the vote we need to take on this. So this now becomes our our new language for this section of the code. So thank you both for coming and preparing us for this.
Thank you so much.
All right, next, item twelve is to consider approval of resolution twelve twenty five, a resolution authorizing the establishment of a four oh one A money purchase plans through Mission Square, also known as IC M A R C for executive management employees. And Nancy McDonald, our human resources consultant, has prepared the staff report of this. Nancy?
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. What you see before you is a resolution seeking authorization to enter into agreements with Mission Square, which is the new branding for IC M A Retirement Corporation. They have been around for probably sixty or seventy years. They are the the corporation, the trust that runs the current four fifty seven deferred compensation account. Without going through this rather lengthy staff report, I'm just going to hit some of the highlights. In the last few years, recruitment for all companies, corporations has become much more difficult. It's even more complicated when you're dealing with public agencies. And then you continue on that on that diagram. When you get into smaller public agencies, you have less funding to cover employee compensation packages. We are lucky now that as of this week, we are I'm going to say fully staffed. I don't believe that we have any openings. We we had quite a few in Public Works because of turnover and retirements, but we are today. That's correct. We had a candidate in the process and she withdrew, so we are going to go out and recruit for that again. It should be posted, if not today, tomorrow. But we've been very lucky. But the recruitment arena has changed. People are more selective in the employers that they decide to work for. So we have to find creative ways to entice them to come. And once we get them, we need to entice them to stay. Because the only thing that's more costly than going through an extensive recruitment is getting the person on board, working them into the organization, getting them skilled up and having a bigger fish coax them away from us. So what I've put for you tonight, there is a sample agreement for the IC M A plan. And it's in a sample format because before I could even get into the system to get the administrative agreement to talk about what we would like to do, we have to sign documents. And since I am a consultant, I don't have the authority to do that. This document before you is requesting the city administrators' ability to do that. And then we can go forward and establish these plans. As you read through the document, the staff report, it indicates some of the things that we have in this organization, which are similar to other agencies. We have cafeteria plans that allow employees to put money aside pre tax to pay for, excuse me, dependent daycare and that can be adults or children and health expenses that aren't covered at all or sufficiently enough by your health plans. You can put money aside pre tax in order to do that, but there are limits on that amount of money. The current four fifty seven plan, actually, there are two of them in this organization. The the more recent one, which has probably still been around for ten, fifteen years, is now with the equitable. And people, everyone in the organization is allowed to participate in that program. I had payroll run a report and out of the fifty, approximately fifty employees we have, there are twenty that are participating. And there are only a couple that are contributing the max. So there is a lot of room for people to participate in that. What I'd like to do is set up a plan that is especially designed for executive management. Right now, with the exception of myself and the finance consultant, those positions are filled. But if any of them get a better offer or they leave us, retire, move on, then I'd like the ability to be able to negotiate employment agreements with them. You have one employee that reports directly to the city council and you are in charge of her employment agreement. And then the administrator is in charge of the offer letters that go to the department heads. We'd like some latitude there to become creative if we need to do so for their compensation packages. Let's see. They, these types of plans appeal to the executives because they tend to be in the higher level of the salary chart. They tend to be more seasoned, more more time on the job, I'll say. I don't want to like point out, but when you're looking at especially city administrators and police chiefs, they tend to have worked their way up through the ranks. They tend to be closer to retirement rather than further away. And this is an opportunity for them to designate from their compensation package wages and or benefits if it's approved in an agreement to make up for some of the time and expenses that they will incur. I don't know how much more in depth you'd like me to go. I can tell you that I've done some research on other agencies. I started with those that were closest to us and then worked my way further out. I currently know of two other cities that are offering the four oh one plan. That would be Tuolleton and Oregon City. And then I've got Canby, Fairview, Happy Valley, Milwaukee, Woodburn and Wilsonville. While they don't have the established four oh one plan, their deferred deferred comp four fifty seven plans all have employer or city contributions at least for the city administrator or city manager, whichever they happen to have. I did not have time to go in depth to find out if their department heads are actually participating in those employer contributions to their deferred comp. Currently, your four fifty seven here only allows for employee directed contributions.
All right, I see we have a question from Counselor Garland. Counselor Garland, go ahead.
On page twelve two, the cost impact, it gives a percentage rate. What's the actual dollar amount on that? What's the actual dollar amount on that?
The cost impact of the point five five percent?
Yes.
That will depend on how much the employee puts in that account. And then that is an employee-paid fee.
Okay, and then on here, it also talks about, um, city contributions. So, um, a contribution by the city could only be made through the acceptance of an updated contract, am I correct?
If you're talking about a city administrator contract, which comes before this council, the answer to that is yes.
Okay, and then, go ahead.
If the city administrator, who is in charge of hiring the department heads in concert with the council, the city administrator could make an arrangement to do that with a department head.
Okay, and then my third question is, right now, anyone in the city that has, uh, a full-time, that has full-time employment, you're saying they can do the four fifty-seven, or they can do a four oh one? They do receive PERS for that? And there was a third one, you talked about the Oregon plan that, that's new?
No, I said that, okay, there are two suppliers of four fifty-seven plans currently in the organization. One has, one has been here for decades, and the other probably for ten to fifteen years.
Okay, so I guess what I'm asking is, right now, if someone wanted to, if someone who was a city employee in Gladstone wanted to invest more money into their retirement programs, right now, what are the ways that they can go, that they can directly do that? How many plans do we have in process right now?
Right now, the only retirement-like program that an employee can contribute to is the four fifty-seven plan, either through ICMA or equitable. And out of the fifty employees that are doing that, or I'm sorry, out of the fifty employees that are eligible to do that, twenty of them are.
Okay, and, and this would require, um, obviously, time on our staff in order to implement this, take the payroll contributions. I just, I feel like, part of me just feels like it's another level of, um, another level of paperwork for such a small town, for a small community. I understand we need to be competitive, but if you look at the amount of money that the people in our city are making, we are competitive. So I, I'm, I'm questioning whether or not we need to add another layer into our, into our, our, what we're doing already.
I could, maybe I could better explain it. Everything is done electronically nowadays. Since we already have accounts set up with ICMA, it is simply another keystroke in order to do that. The setup fee would be, well, my time with the assistance of Tammy to process the paperwork, if you authorize this tonight, to get the administrative agreement set up with ICMA to allow us to talk about four oh one A plans. Any further action, it can go two ways. It could be set up where, in our case, the city administrator could contribute what's already in her compensation package into that plan, up to the federal maximum. If, at a later time, the council makes, um, a call to adjust the current administrator or future administrators' contracts, they can be set up where you can contribute employer or city dollars into it. But again, those are done with keystrokes.
So just to clarify, um, the, the options that we have, we could set it up, set up a plan with no matching contribution from the city for, uh, executive employees. Uh, but the plan itself could be amended later to allow that in the future if that were an important, uh, recruiting, um, process, uh, you know, some, okay.
Correct, a recruiting or a retention, uh, possibility.
Okay.
And you, and you notice that the document says plans because there would be one plan that would be set up for city administrators because this body makes the decisions on that employment contract. And then the rest of the executive management are lumped into a group in that plan, and they would have to decide.
Okay.
There are different, um, details that have to be worked out. But I, again, I can't, until I can get an administrative services agreement, I can't do that.
Right.
What I believe to be, for example, is the group, the existing police chief, the city recorder, the public works director, and the community service manager, they would have to agree to put one percent, five percent, ten percent in as a group. They're not treated as individuals. When you hire new executive staff in the future, you can do another agreement for them. And yes, in either group, you can do amendments in the future.
Okay. Um, Councilor, uh, Cook did a little bit of math. Uh, if the maximum contribution for an employee was sixty-six thousand dollars, then the fee involved that point five five percent per annum, she calculated it came up to about three hundred and sixty-three dollars, and that would be a cost borne by the staff person themselves, not the city. Uh, is, is that your, your understanding, assuming that math?
Understanding.
Okay, all right.
It's just like, uh, my US bank. Well, seniors don't have to pay. When I wasn't a senior, you had like a monthly service.
It's on that level of, of that kind of a fee. Right. And, and I would say, you know, part of the reason, um, uh, I worked in business for a long time, doing pension plans and retirement plans for small businesses, uh, of various sizes. And, um, at, at, at different levels of their service, uh, or their, or their career, employees need different kinds of benefit options. If you're very young and raising a family and want to buy a house, you want to get as much salary as you can because at that point in your life, maybe that's what you really need. Uh, childcare benefits, um, uh, salary sufficient to, to do a mortgage. If you've been in the business for a while or in your career for a while, you may reach the place where your home is paid for, your children are grown, uh, they're handling their own student loans, hopefully. Uh, and maybe at that point in your life, you're making more than you really need for your ongoing expenses, but earning a salary commensurate with the duties and responsibilities of the job. Uh, and there are advantages of being able to defer some of that income into a retirement, uh, vehicle that will be available to you later when you're no longer working, and then your taxes are paid on that at that time. And so we're, we're providing this opportunity for people. Uh, as a small city, we tend to attract, or we hope to attract people with sufficient experience, uh, that maybe they are in that place in their life, where they're farther along in their career, uh, that this could be a real attractive benefit to help draw them in and keep them in. So that's part of the purpose why we're looking at it. You have provided for us a document, uh, an adoption agreement document, which, uh, I think it's, it's sort of a, a boilerplate that the IRS has given approval to, but allows a lot of options of which boxes get checked. You are not asking us to check any of these boxes tonight and, and make the specific, uh, agreements to this yet. This is something that would be done as the next stage in this process, is that correct, Nancy?
Yes, I need to give a little bit of an explanation. You are correct, this is a sample document that meets all the IRS regulations. When, if you give approval tonight, then that would allow me to work with ICMA to get the administrative agreement. Then we can get into one of these for the city of Gladstone. If we are just talking about employee contributions, then there is no reason why I, we couldn't go forward working with the current city administrator if she wants to participate. And, for example, instead of directing money to the existing four fifty-seven, or in addition to, she could direct her money into this plan. If, in the course of renewing, if that's what you decide to do, her employment agreement, and you make other changes, you can direct an amendment, and you would see this document again to make any changes there. The administrative services agreement just gets the ball rolling so that an employee can contribute. And the other plan document, so that I can engage the remaining executive employees in a conversation about whether they want to contribute or not.
Okay, you've given, you've given us some language tonight for authorizing the establishment, but that gives us, that's, that's basically saying, you know, you're crossing the, I mean, you, you're at the start line, and then, and then we need to actually establish the terms of it, uh, moving forward.
Need to get into the administrative services agreement so that I'm able to get into the plan documents. It can be set up for the city administrator based on her current compensation package. The money that she's currently contributing to the four fifty-seven or an additional amount can be placed in here. That does not take this body to make that decision. If, in the course of reviewing her employment agreement, you make changes and you want to affect changes in this agreement, I'd bring back an amendment to the body to review.
Okay, all right. Uh, I, this is a complicated matter, it's not something we've dealt with before. Are there other questions? Do you need some clarification? Councilor Alexander?
Right, because I'm hearing, um, recruitment. I understand this is another option, right? You say you want to make it attractive.
Yes, sir.
But I'm hearing you only want to make it attractive to executive people. Why not all the employees? Why don't they get that option? Why are we, why are we excluding employees from this nice option? We, don't we want to attract everyone?
It's a twofold answer.
Okay.
Because the IRS established these plans for the higher wage earners, for the executive-level employees. The other type of plan in a government agency is the four fifty-seven, which has a lower contribution limit. That's the difference, that's the difference between the twenty-two-five and the sixty-six. And those are current-year amounts. They are indexed according to IRS regulations, and they can go up a little bit each year. The plan, there are two plans that already exist that employees could be participating. That's why I did the head count. They're not all taking advantage of it. And as the mayor was alluding, it all depends on the different stages of your life and your, um, marital situation. If it's a two-family income and they've been in their job for a long time, then you're likely going to see more contributions to these types of plans. If you are someone who is closer to retirement age, that has their houses paid off and things like that, and their kids raised, you're going to see greater contributions. There are options available to employees at all levels to participate in this, as well as taking advantage of their cafeteria plans that are coupled with their health plans that are offered by the city. And I actually have the numbers on that.
So it's, it's a salary, I mean, like, the only people that get this option have to make so much money a year?
No, no.
Well, see, that's, I'm sort of.
That's not what I'm saying. Every, every regular employee in the city can contribute to the existing four fifty-seven plan.
Right.
And we have an employee base of about fifty. Out of the fifty, there are only twenty that are taking advantage of that. They're, um, paying more in taxes because they are not deferring their income. And the reason they're not may be because of their current family situation. They need the liquid cash rather than putting it away for later. The other part of my speech here was, they're not even taking advantage of this Section one twenty-five plans. Every employee in the city has the option of the health insurance that's offered by the city. We have a very comprehensive health plan, and the city pays for ninety percent of that. Their contribution rates are done, the employees' ten percent contribution rates can be done pre-tax. All they have to do is sign a form. They can also put money aside to pay for things that aren't covered in their health plans and to pay for their daycare expenses. They don't even take advantage of that. So, um, this kind of, you can take the horse to the lake, but you can't make him drink. So there are options that I wish they would take advantage of it because it would, it would be to their benefit to do so. What we're trying to address are those employees that are taking advantage of those options, but if there was another option, they could have a greater advantage.
So all these executive employees are taking advantage of the options that are given them right now?
No, they are not.
So we're going to offer more, a better package, is that what you're saying?
But the difference is, it's their money that they're earning. They're just contributing it to a plan where they can save on their taxes.
And, and I understand, I just don't know why everyone doesn't get that option. I guess I'm just not figuring it out.
Because the IRS will not allow less than the high-income wages, wage earners to participate in a four oh one A plan.
So what I said earlier is, you have to make a certain amount to be in this plan.
In the four oh one A plan.
Okay.
All right, Councilor Cook, you had a question or comment?
I did, but then it was answered. Um, so I guess, I, so I guess I don't have any other questions. Um, thank you for preparing this, this was quite the, um, you know, it, it's, we're not often talking about, you know, benefits, um, here, so thank you for the information. You know, I think, I think this is a wonderful, creative solution um, for a challenging recruitment and retention landscape. Um, you know, you look at the titles on this list of the six employees who would be covered, um, police chief, city recorder, public works director, finance director, community services manager, and city administrator. Any one of those, uh, positions going into a vacancy would have a dramatic effect on the city, the institutional knowledge, the years and decades of institutional knowledge that is, um, found within that group. I think anything we can do, especially one that doesn't cost us a significant amount of money, um, seems like a pretty clear win. Let's buy two cents.
Thank you, Ca, thank you, Councilor Cook. Councilor Huckabee?
I just want, I think that this is a great example of how a group of elected officials get up here and share their lived experiences and, you know, whatever that may be. And, you know, we can kind of speak to some of us up here, like, what our employers have. And this, this is not uncommon. Um, you know, I, I have a relative who's very close to me, and we're in the same industry. And we've been in the same industry, she has probably five years on me. Um, but she's in a much higher level as a, as a vice president, um, of a competing career. But she has these type of deferred comp, um, situations available to her because of her level in, in the company, and it's rightfully so. Um, you know, if I miss a week of work, you know, people are a little troubled. If a VP misses, you know, a whole bunch of time, or we have to replace a VP, you know, that is very costly and very time-consuming. Um, so these, these are not uncommon at all. Um, and I think it's a great way that is very minimal, um, to the city as far as administrative. to the city as far as administrative and cost to retain our, you know, some of our our highest quality positions, I guess I should say, higher qual qualified positions is what I should say. And then to recruit them if if the need comes in the future, because not everybody is going to stay with Gladstone forever. We want people to be able to retire and have the money set aside to do that. That will really enrich enrich their retirement age and their plans for the future. And it is important that us as a city have made available everything to have our employees have that success afterwards.
Any other comments or questions? Is there a motion to on 12-2, there's some language for a motion. Would someone like to make it?
I will make it. I move to approve Resolution 1225 to authorize the establishment of a 401A money purchase plans through Mission Square, AKA ICMACRC for executive management employees.
I'll second the motion.
All right, it's been moved by Counselor Huckabee and seconded by Counselor Cook. Any discussion further on this before we take a vote? Counselor Garland?
I just want to make sure that we are talking about an employee contribution. And if if that should ever change, Resolution 1225 would have to change. Am I hearing that correctly?
If there was a change in this resolution, it would come before the body to address it, and it would be done through an amendment.
And the resolution is that it's only employee contribution at this time?
The resolution
Is that part of it, I'm asking?
The resolution doesn't even go that far. This is authorizing the implementation of the plan. You have to go through the administrative documents first, and then a plan can be set up. And yes, the initial plan can be set up with the city administrator's contribution. And if the executive, the remaining executive group agrees on a percentage between them, it can be set up. Any contribution from a city standpoint, if it's the administrator, it has to come before this body. If it is one of the other executive employees, that is done through the city administrator when we do a conditional offer followed by a formal offer of employment. And in the hiring of department heads, the city administrator confers, and you've even been, some of you have even been included on interview panels for those positions.
Okay, so what I'm hearing you say is with the exception of the city administrator, anyone else being hired going forward could this could include a employer, which is us, contribution to this plan for them?
That could be a possibility.
Along with all the other benefits, the the salary level, the other benefits that are involved in whatever compensation package we put out there for for hiring someone new. All those have to be determined at the time of a of an employment offer being given.
That's correct.
Okay, so we will have a document that allows for a provision of an employer matching contribution or some kind of a not necessarily matching, but an additional contribution from the employer. But we are not committed to that by adopting this resolution tonight.
That's correct.
Okay.
Any change like that would have to come by an amendment.
Okay, so I think is that helpful, Counselor Garland? That your your preference is that we do it because the language referenced earlier was there would not be a matching country that we don't have matching contributions now, and that we would set this up so that there was not an employer contribution.
The city administrators' employment, existing employment agreement does not reference any employer contribution to a 457 or a 401A. If this body decided to do that, you would have to do that through a modification to her employment agreement. The second plan has to be agreed by the existing group. They have not been involved in any discussion about it because I can't get any materials in order to do that. But they would all, for example, all have to agree to contribute X percent to this.
But you're not saying that they would write the the terms of the of the city's contribution to that themselves, right?
They would not.
They would not. So they could not dictate their own. They could they could not say, we'd like to set this up so the city puts, you know, 20% of what we put into it. Who makes the decision as to whether or not there there would be a match for those employees other than the city administrator?
So existing employees have already been hired under their offer of employment. That would apply any possible city contribution to that group would be for new hires.
Okay.
When I can say, when the finance consultant is no longer a consultant and you hire a finance director, when that person is hired, that is when the city administrator would have discussions with that person as to whether they wanted to participate in a 401 or a 457, and if there was going to be an employer contribution. If you modify the current administrator's employment agreement or you get a new city administrator in the future, that will be up to you as a body to decide if there's going to be an employer contribution.
Okay, all that has to work into the the budget of the city, which which is another aspect that that the city council has approval of.
That's
And so if if the city by providing a city contribution to one of these plans adds that to the contract of an employee, a future employee, then our budget would have to reflect that that's, you know, that's part of what what the package is. And as you said, probably one or more members of the council would be involved in helping to shape that package in that hiring process.
Well, certainly you will all be involved if you're hiring an administrator.
Yes.
If you are hiring, for example, a finance director, well, all of you can be at one time because then you have a quorum, but I'm trying to reflect back when we hired the public works director. The then mayor was involved in the process. When we hired the police chief and the fire chief, I had to watch for the quorum, and I can't remember. I know that there were at least three because I have them on on different panels in different rooms at different times so that we didn't approach the quorum. But yes, they participate in the process.
Okay, and I'm hard, I'm sorry that we're we're have all these questions, but most or maybe maybe none of us have been involved on a council that has hired an executive level staff and participate in the processes you're describing. So we don't really know from experience how it's done, and and that's why we're raising these questions.
And if I can't answer the questions, then you have a bigger problem. So, yes.
Okay. One more question for Counselor Alexander?
Not a question so much. So what I'm reading right here, and there's an effective date of October 1st, 2023. So none of this, if they agree or have a meeting and you put it up can go, well, we can put this money and match it. So it's not retroactive. You can't go back a year or whatever and start.
I I picked October the 1st because I knew that we had this meeting tonight. And that I wanted to be able to get the administrative agreement, and I have to put an effective date on that. So I picked October the 1st.
All right, Counselor Huckabee, did you have another question or comment? No, okay. All right, Attorney Jacobs, can you clarify this, some of this? If 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 there were things that were said tonight that that you can provide a little more clarity for us? I understand you had your hand up momentarily. Maybe there was an item that
I was going to make the point that you had just made, Mayor, that although the city administrator has authority to sort of oversee employees, there's two aspects of Gladstone's code that provide the council with oversight of that. The first is that under your code, the the city administrator for new hires actually can only make a recommendation for the new hire for a department head, and the council actually has to approve that. So as part of that process, you can certainly ask to see what the compensation package is and either approve an employee match or not. Second, and most importantly, is the the point you just made, Mayor, was that any sort of compensation package that the city administrator is going to offer has to fall within her budget authority. So to the extent that you have not authorized funds for employer match, the city wouldn't have money to do that, and the city administrator couldn't offer it. So there will, even though there's the possibility for non-city administrator, department head level employees to get an employer match, there is a check and balance for the council to be able to review that and approve that in the future. So it's it's not a blank check for the city administrator to go and provide an employer match for other employees.
All right, that's helpful. Thank you, Chad. You know, I know years ago, the city tried to adopt a an amended city charter that would have changed the title of our city administrator to city manager. And at the time, ignorant of these matters, I thought that was just a different name for the same position. But in conversation with our city administrator, it was explained to me that there are differences in terms of that hiring authority and that you just alluded to. So the voters have expressed a preference for continuing this method. And our charter, because of the way we have it set up, provides for the council to have the authority that you've just described. So that's helpful for us to know. And there are maybe other cities where the administrator has a different level of authority when it comes to hiring executive staff. But here, the council will be involved and have a say in that. And and as long as the city, the citizens trust the council to make the right decisions, that's our authority, and we will certainly exercise that right as a council. Other comments or questions before we take a vote on the motion? All right, the motion is before us to approve Resolution 1225. Did I say who moved and seconded it? I think I did. It was Counselor Huckabee and Counselor Cook. All right, and we'll call the roll there.
Counselor Riechel?
Yes.
Counselor Alexander?
Yes.
Counselor Huckabee?
Yes.
Counselor Garland?
Yes.
Counselor Roberts?
Yes.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Mayor Milch?
Yes, the resolution is passed. Now, we are charging you, Nancy and the city administrator, with responsibility of going forward. Now that you have the authority of the council to do this, you will help to set up the language, the specific language in terms of this plan that we've now authorized. And then will you need to come back to us at some point for an adoption of the actual plan?
No, I will not. If the council as a body wants to make any changes to the city administrator's contract in the future, if that results in an amendment being made, then you will have to address that.
Okay, and we are responsible for maintaining and renewing that contract. There is a time period at which it needs to be renewed according to the current contract. And we will accept advice from you on any action that we might take during the current contract term that would that would help to put this plan into action as far as our current city administrator.
The current contract expires June 30th of 24. There is language in there, and I don't have a copy with me as far as deadlines, actions by which the council has to make decisions or it invokes invokes, and Chad may be able to help me, it involves there's deadlines. If you're not going to renew it, you have to make a decision in X amount of time, or there are penalties as such. So I believe that you should consider that before the end of the calendar year because it takes time to get on the agenda with all of those changes.
All right.
And if the council wants to make any changes, any consideration of the current administrators' leave time, that would be the time to address it.
All right, Administrator Betts and City Attorney Jacobs, would you be willing to work together to prepare an agenda item for our October meeting that will help us understand where we are on this and where we might be able to apply this to both you as current administrator and if necessary also. Well, we're not looking at at other department heads right now. Administrator Betts, did you understand my question? And do you have a?
You would like us to look at the timelines in regards to my current employment contract for notification of whether or not you plan to renew it or not? Is that what you're looking at?
Well, not so much the renewal aspect. We have a little more time on that, but also this, the 401A that we've just adopted, you are the employee that we have to oversee changes in that contract, whether this will be applicable to you and in what way, what form of your salary or benefits or other aspects of your compensation is included in this plan. So yes, Nancy?
It's two different things. We can set this plan up and Ms. Betts can direct her contributions into it. If we had this set up in October, she could direct money there.
That would not require an amendment of her contract.
That's correct.
Okay.
If the council wants to make a decision to direct a contribution there, whether it is in a percentage of salary or the equivalent of leave time because she has, excuse me, she has been losing leave time. That is an issue that's been around since you're the previous council. Then that would require an amendment to her employment agreement.
Okay.
But the caution here is even if you decide not to make any changes, you still need to do it well enough in advance because the last couple contract updates have been at the last minute, like the last meeting of the year. And she's had to agree to an extension of the current agreement that expired before the new one was put in place.
All right, I've I've observed enough meetings over the years that I know that staff at all levels come to us with very well-prepared reports and recommendations and action. But it's awkward to come to the council saying, you know, this is what I want you to do for me. It's awkward for the city administrator and so that's the one area where the council really has to accept that responsibility ourselves to be proactive in making sure this happens, happens in a timely way, happens in an equitable and fair way, and happens with good knowledge and preparation. So all I'm saying is I I want the the attorney and the city administrator to guide me in preparing the agenda in the next few months for making sure that we are beginning to work on this in a timely manner. And I trust in your experience, Nancy McDonald, on this, on the timing of how much we need because we don't know. And the previous councils didn't often know, and that's part of the reason why sometimes these things were left for too long.
I can provide the information to the city attorney. The city attorney is The city attorney is the one that has to do the presentation to the council.
Very good.
Not me as a city consultant.
All right.
So Mayor.
Yes.
So just real quick, so, because I just want to make sure that everyone's on the same page here, because the current contract is a little different from previous contracts. Um the current contract is set to expire on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, as opposed to previous contracts expired at the end of the year.
Yes.
We do have a little bit more time, because city still is required, if we do not intend to renew the contract, to provide a hundred and twenty days notice. Um so a hundred and twenty days before June thirtieth would be the deadline to provide notice if we don't plan to renew the contract and just let it expire. Um you can provide notice after that date within the hundred and twenty, between hundred and twenty days before and June thirtieth. But if you do that, you'll owe a severance payment to the city administrator. So the hundred and twenty days is sort of your deadline to be able to say, we're not going to renew the contract and walk away without any further payments. Um and so you've got some time to make that decision. We can certainly calendar that for you to put it on your agenda. You also have a requirement in the existing contract to do an evaluation this spring. Um and so I don't know if you want to do the evaluation before making that decision on the hundred and twenty days, but that's all information that we can bring to you later this fall. You can have a discussion about what your options are, and then, you know, come up with a game plan about how you want to proceed as far as making all those types of decisions. But you do have a little bit of time, because unlike in previous years, the contract doesn't expire at the end of the year. It instead expires on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
All right, thank you. And and just to make it clear to everyone, um I have no question in my mind that I want the contract to be renewed, and I hope that the city administrator feels the same way. Uh I'm not concerned about that that aspect of it, but we have just adopted a resolution that would allow uh um, you know, a a benefit that could accrue to this particular staff person. And I want to be able to sure, to be sure that uh we enable that to happen uh in the most efficient way and as soon as possible. So that's what, it was the amending of the current contract, if that's required in order to implement this change.
And just to be clear on that, as uh Nancy just explained, in order for Administrator Betts to take advantage of what you just approved, there's no further council action that would be required. The only further council action would be required is if if she requested and you all agreed to an employer's contribution to that plan.
Very good. That's helpful. All right, so you let us know, Administrator Betts, if you want to make that request, and then we, as a council, can decide whether to honor that request uh of us. All right, we've finished this item, I believe. Any other questions? We um this is one of those things that's new to all of us, and so I appreciate Nancy and uh Chad for your involvement of this. And um and Administrator Betts, you're you're right here while we're talking about you and talking about your job and all that, and you're you're still there, so we appreciate it. All right, uh next one, we have a staff report from uh our Public Works Director, Darren Canaparoli, on a consideration of approval of a resolution adopting a pavement condition index. Uh we looked at this at a work session recently, and I think we were pretty much in agreement and got all our questions answered then. So if you will present it to us, we'll see if we'll take some action tonight.
Perfect. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. In twenty sixteen, the Gladstone, City of Gladstone established a pavement management program. When this was established, pavement condition ex index, also known as a PCI, was a sixty-seven, which put us into the fair category. The cost to keep us at the sixty-seven is currently about four hundred thousand dollars a year. In twenty twenty-two, we had the roads re-rated and the PCI stayed at a sixty-seven. But with the current funding of four hundred thousand dollars a year, we would not be able to sustain the the current PCI. At the March Council Work Session, staff brought the pavement management program to council to talk about funding of the program. At that time, there was discussion on what it it would cost to bring our current our current streets to a PCI of seventy-one, which is in the good category. To move our PCI to a seventy-one, it would cost approximately nine hundred thousand dollars a year, which is currently budgeted budgeted in the current biennium. You have two options before you this evening. One would be to approve and adopt a pavement condition index of seventy-one for the City of Gladstone Pavement Management Program, or not to approve the pavement condition index of seventy-one and continue with the current funding. I'll take any questions that you have.
Any questions from councilors? Counselor Garlington.
I was just wondering, do you have a percentage rate of what that um the percentage rate of how much more we could cover for uh the amount of money? What am I think, how am I, I'm saying that completely wrong. I sincerely apologize. I'm I'm just wondering, we did an enormous amount of work. It was probably less than ten percent of the streets in the city. Am I right there? Am I getting that right?
Yeah.
To a seventy-one would give us a percentage of how many streets in the city?
Well, it it's not based off of how many streets. It's based off of the condition of the streets. Uh if you recall in the work session, it the whole idea with pavement management is to keep the streets that we currently have in the good condition, in the good condition. The ones that are in the fair condition, try to move them toward the good condition. And then unfortunately, the streets that are in like the very poor condition, where there's a complete reconstruct, those are going to take more time to go forward to be able to get those streets where they need to be. So as far as a percentage, I I can't really say what a percentage would be.
Right, okay. I understand what you're saying. So this does not include any street that is in dire straits?
Um in the the total of the four year or the five years uh of the projected in the five years, there are the final two years, there are two uh, there is money put aside for the streets that are in very poor condition. Um I don't know what those streets are. I don't pick the streets. The computer soft software picks the streets. So I would I would have to go look and see what those are, but uh eventually it gets to a point where you the the good streets are stable enough, the fair streets are moving upwards, and so you spend more money on the poor and the very poor. And as time goes on, eventually you will bring everything up. Um this is a five-year outlook uh for the nine hundred thousand dollars a year. Uh after that five years, we'll get the roads rerated again, and then we'll have to look at what that is at that point. Uh the PCI in within that five years should bring us to a seventy-one. Um once we have the roads rerated, we can look at um what it's going to take to keep us at that seventy-one, or if the council would like to look at other options to be able to bring that even to a higher uh PCI at that time.
I just, I worry about some of the people that I hear from about how bad their roads are, and I just cringe when I say, gee, you're not on the list. But I thank you for your work. I know you're doing the best that you can, and I am one hundred percent behind this rate, this increase. Um I just wish it was more, and I wish people understood that. So thank you again.
Counselor Cook.
Yeah, I had a comment that was really similar to Counselor Garlington's. So uh you know, we we had a really thorough work session on this, and I learned way more about pavement than I thought I'd ever know. Um the pavement management plan that you have is really strategic, doing a lot with a small number of resources. I think uh Counselor Garlington, I feel your your same like bad feeling when when, you know, residents raise their hands and say, look at my street. Here's a picture of my street. There's all these potholes. How come this isn't being addressed? Um and I think our strategy is sound. It's just not intuitive. It just doesn't have that gut. Like, it doesn't make sense until you take the time to to understand why. Um do we have any opportunity to do some social media marketing, uh maybe include some information in the Gladstone Newsletter um for residents to help them understand the approach that the city's taken? Because I think it's really smart and modern, um but I think there's opportunity to let our citizens know um why we're doing what we're doing.
Yeah, I would agree with that. I think that would be an excellent idea, and I echo what you hear, because we hear it too. Every time we go out to do paving projects or, you know, slurry seal or anything like that, we get a flood of phone calls, and it's very difficult to to tell somebody, you know, unfortunately, you know, you're not on the on the list right now, but that's not to say that, you know, eventually they would. It's just a matter of when.
I do agree, though, that this is a bold statement by the city council that says, we're committed to improving our streets. We're increasing the amount of money that we're allocating each year from four hundred thousand to nine hundred thousand dollars, and we need to be educating the public better about how those funds are spent and how the streets are prioritized. It's either that, or we need to start talking about going out to the voters for a bond, and that's very difficult for people to want to pay for that. So yes, I think what the city council is saying tonight is that we acknowledge that we have streets that need to be fixed. We're dedicating more funding to it, and that we're also going to educate you to help you understand how that works.
Darren, I appreciate you helped us understand that it's cheaper to keep a good street good than it is to rebuild a poor street. And the more streets we can get to that good level, the lower the cost of actually maintaining them. So that's why we're trying to see this gradual increase in the in the in the index uh to is to have more streets in good condition, which can be maintained at a relatively lower cost. And just because we're not going to completely reconstruct some of the bad streets, that doesn't mean that your department does not go out and actually do some patching work, right?
Yeah, that is correct. With there there are streets that, you know, that are in very poor condition uh that we can come out and and do some skin patching, things like that. It's not a brand-new street by any means, but it it does, you know, it's a Band-Aid.
Yes.
What it is.
All right. Okay, um are we ready for a motion and a vote on this one?
I move to approve resolution one two two six to adopt a pavement condition index PCI of seventy-one for the City of Gladstone Pavement Management Plan.
I'll second.
All right, it's been moved by Council Council Alexander, seconded by Counselor Huckabee. And as a reminder, as as staff reported, we are already budgeting for this level of funding. Uh that is included in our budget now, uh that we've already adopted. All right, um any further discussion? All right, uh Tammy, will you call the roll, please?
Counselor Alexander.
Yes.
Counselor Riechel.
Yes.
Counselor Cook.
Yes.
Counselor Roberts.
Yes.
Counselor Garlington.
Yes.
Counselor Huckabee.
Yes.
Mayor Milch.
Yes, the resolution is adopted. All right, final item on the regular agenda is uh adoption of council rules. Uh we have looked these over in a couple of work sessions. Uh staff has prepared language, so Chad, will you introduce this item for us?
Sure, thank you, Mayor and Council. Again, Chad Jacobs from the City Attorney's Office. So before you tonight is the culmination of all your hard work on your council rules. Uh the language has not really changed much since you went over it during your last meeting. I did want to point out two specific changes, however. The first one is on uh page fourteen-nine of your agenda packet, and that's in uh G two under Council Member Conduct. And this is the language that we came up with regarding identifying yourself as an individual. And this is based on the conversation you had last time. Uh it's the first time you'll have actually seen the language, so I just want to make sure that I pointed it out. Uh I believe in working with Administrator Betts that we've captured the essence of what our discussion was during the last meeting, um but I just want to make sure that you saw that. Before I move on from that, do you have any questions about that particular language or any edits that you would want to make to that?
I'm I'm grateful to you for pointing out to it uh uh to it it to us tonight, because we are entering into election season. Some of us may be called upon to endorse candidates, and uh we have established a policy now that the rate way to list yourself in an endorsement would be by title. So it would be City Councilor Jackie Jones uh as you have here. So that's helpful. We can apply it almost right away uh if we're involved in the election process. Go ahead, and you said there was a second item as well.
And the second one, I just wanted to uh point you back to page fourteen dash fifteen um and rule R uh two, I wish I could read my writing better. Uh but R two two, but I don't think that's correct, but it's basically the language about appointments. Um R two D, I'm sorry. It's at the top of page fourteen dash fifteen. And this is the last sentence where we talked about the limitation on serving on more than one committee. It doesn't apply to the Budget Committee. And Counselor Cook had raised this last time and and pointed out that it looked like we were making a substantive change. So I did go back to look at the history of this particular rule and what the city council was trying to do at that point in time. And it was, in fact, to create an exemption to the limitation on serving on two boards and commissions for members of the Budget Committee. So I made the, I guess, executive decision to propose to you to uh reincorporate that language back in, since you didn't really want to make that substantive change. And then just keeping the language provided that appointed members of the Budget Committee may not be officers, agents, or employees of the city, because that's what's required by state law. So just incorporating the state law like we talked about before, but reincorporating that existing language about creating the exemption for Budget Committee members, does that seem more consistent with what your intent was? And is it is consistent with what the original intent of that language was in the rules?
Counselor Cook, I'll let you answer that question.
Well, I can only speak for myself, but um I really appreciate you doing that, and I think it lowers another barrier for uh residents of Gladstone to be involved in their local government, and so I appreciate you for doing that work.
All right, um other questions or comments uh about uh what's been presented? Counselor Garlington?
On page fourteen fourteen, R I A, I believe there should be the letter two after council. Or the, I'm sorry, not the letter, the word two. My apologies.
So R one A?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I had to get, yes. A mayor.
Counsel. The mayor points members of the council.
Two committees.
Yes.
Okay.
I would like to add, I think that is incorrect, as that is specifically speaking about council committees as opposed to committees that council members individually take part of. My understanding is different. I may also, I may be incorrect here.
No, the the this language is dealing with council committees, so when you all create a a subcommittee of the council, the mayor has authority to appoint you all to um council committees. Um so really, I think it could be read either way, because it's members of council, two committees, which are established by these rules, um or members of council committees, which are established by these rules. I mean, it's it's.
Yeah, I think the first the first paragraph is sort of introductory to the idea. The second, where you begin using uh uh capital letters on council and committee, uh then gets back in, gets into what Counsel Robert's was saying, the actual structure of council committees themselves. So we form committees, and we call them council committees if they are made up by the city council, and then these are the rules. So I I think um we can add the word two uh between the word council and the word committees in the first paragraph. Uh and then the other two paragraphs help us, you know, in the definition of the rules themselves. All right, do we have any other questions or a motion?
I would just want to say I found the rest of the language you pointed out, Chad, to be satisfactory, and I myself have already leaned on that section G two in submitting a um oh, oh endorsement, nomination was the right word, endorsement. So thank you for that. Um at this time, I will also then make a motion to approve resolution one two two seven, a resolution adopting council rules for the Gladstone City Council and repealing prior rules.
And I assume that that motion includes the 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 amendment adding the word two to that one sentence.
Yes.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, it's been moved by Counselor Roberts, seconded by Counselor Riechel to adopt this uh with the one slight change that we noted. Um any further discussion? Tammy, will you call the roll, please?
Counselor Garlington.
Yes.
Counselor Roberts.
Yes.
Counselor Cook.
Yes.
Counselor Riechel.
Yes.
Counselor Alexander.
Yes.
Counselor Huckabee.
Yes.
Mayor Milch.
Yes, the resolution is adopted. So these are our new rules. Uh and thank you all, council and uh Attorney Jacobs, for. Uh, and thank you all, council and, uh, Attorney Jacobs for helping us get through this process. And, uh, Tammy and staff for, uh, getting the language prepared for us. All right, that concludes our regular agenda. We have an item under business carried forward. We have discussed a lot, uh, over the years, even prior to many of us being on this council, uh, our concern about proposed tolling in this region on the I-two-oh-five and the I-five. And, um, at the request of a counselor, we have a letter here included in our packet tonight for your information, uh, regarding some, uh, action that, uh, our representative in Washington DC is hoping to make on this issue. So I encourage each of you to read that, to be informed about it. Uh, we're not asking anyone to take a position on it tonight as a council. Uh, but, um, it, it, it provides a good summary of some of the concerns about, on this issue. And, uh, I think it's important to stay knowledgeable about it. Uh, I've spoken to citizens who say, oh, we shouldn't be concerned about this tolling. It's not a city issue. You should stay out of it. I don't agree with that at all. I think we need to be able to, uh, advise our legislators at all different levels of government, uh, how this impacts our community and what the best, uh, way forward needs to be on this. So, uh, uh, Counselor Garlington, thank you for bringing this to us and for having us included in the packet. Uh, would you like to add anything to that?
Nope, think, I just wanted everyone to see it. I think the higher we get up, the bet, the, the louder our cumulative voices are. And that's a good thing.
All right, very good. Uh, so now we're back at, uh, normally this would be the time we have business from the audience. Uh, Tammy, do we have any requests?
We have not received any.
Okay. Uh, so we go to business from the council. Uh, I'll start at my right and just work our way down. So Counselor Huckabee.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't really have a lot this evening. I just want to recognize and give kudos to the community center and their staff and volunteers for putting on music on the greens last Friday, which was again, a great success. And I saw some other members of this dius up there, so I appreciate you guys coming. Um, I also want to give huge kudos to, um, Happy Rock Coffee Roasters, who right across the street from Music on the Greens, um, brought the community together by giving out over one hundred burgers, um, plant-based and meat, um, to the community as well as, you know, chips and drinks. And it was a great time. Um, a lot of people from the, uh, Music on the Greens came over and grabbed a bite to eat before they went and listened to music. Um, it was overall a great community event on both sides. Um, I do want to do a side note that there were some people who showed up on opposition of Happy Rock giving out free food. Um, and for the most part, they were ignored, um, which I think was really, really great. And it sent a message that, you know, that type of, um, unnecessary opposition and hate is just not welcome in our community. So I give kudos to everybody who did that.
Thank you. Counselor Alexander.
I got the great opportunity to ride around with Officer Olson and Nanook. And I wasn't even in the car right out here for two minutes and we got called to Lake Oswego. I got to watch the dog go in action, found, uh, gloves, hat, shirt, they got DNA. It was amazing because the people were already, I'm sitting in the, in the truck while they walked the dog down to like State Street. And when he comes back, he says, do you want to see what he does in the backyards? So these people broke into the house here, but they had to go through like five backyards that were on the lake. So we got to go into every backyard and he got to sniff around and see what he found. But within three minutes of that, they're saying victims JP Chase card already being hit on three times. I mean, these guys couldn't even have been down the block and they were already trying to use, it was amazing, but they got, they got him on. And then every night, all night, he did great. We just, we got to see everything. He caught some people, uh, over there in the, uh, Ford parking lot, hiding behind cars. And then we held him till Wilsonville came. I mean, it was, it was really interesting to go on, on, if you can do it, go on it. It's great.
And, and a very multi-jurisdictional experience. We're sharing.
Sheriff's, Wilsonville and Gladstone, the whole night I was riding. I forgot to see all those officers. So it was great.
All right, Counselor Riechel.
Um, yeah, just a couple of things to share, uh, regarding, um, we had the Parks and Rec Board meeting last night. Um, just a reminder to the community that at High Rocks, AMR is done for the season. So use extra caution if you are utilizing the resources there. Um, Chief Schmerber had reported that, uh, their calls this season were way down and there were no reported deaths this year at High Rocks, which is wonderful. Unusual news to share. I don't know how to word that. It's very strange. But, um, they, the restrooms down there are remaining closed and the porta-potties are being removed this week. So, um, again, just please use caution if you are utilizing the resources down there this weekend when it's supposed to be hot. Um, a couple of other things they're working on. They're working on reviewing some options for grant ideas to continue to make improvements in our park. It's, um, going to be a very exciting and interesting process for them to go through. And then the nature park, we're still waiting on a couple of, um, surveys and permitting pieces, administrative stuff to go through with the state and a few other bodies in order to get the pavement program done up there. Um, but it's in the process. It will be happening. So that also is exciting. And then, um, just to remind everybody of the Dog Fest that is going to be happening on the fourteenth. It's at noon to three. And I think that's about it. Um, Meldrum and Robin Hood, the place structures have been ordered and are in process. But we probably won't see them delivered until winter, maybe November at the earliest. And that's it.
Thank you, Counselor Riechel. Counselor Cook?
Uh, don't have many city updates. I think, uh, you know, on a personal note, both of my kids started school. It's back to school season. And I just wanted to share a small observation that, you know, back to school, it's not just for children. Um, and it's really a transformative time where parents, um, are involved, obviously, in raising their children. But also teachers and neighbors and community members and volunteers. Um, it really does take a village to raise children. And, um, just the, the support and joy that my family has received at back to school. I'm seeing, you know, happen for all families of young children and I'm grateful for it. Um, and you know, sometimes when we talk about education and our community, a lot of times, you know, occasionally you'll like, I'll hear people say things like, well, I don't have any kids. It's like, well, but you were once a child. This is one of those times where we were all once vulnerable and we were embraced and grew through that. And so, um, it's just a wonderful time and a wonderful time to be in a community like Gladstone where we really do all come together to uplift um, all children. Just lovely.
Counselor Roberts?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, much like Counsel Alexander, I also had the opportunity to ride along with the GPD again. I rode with Jeff Oliver, who came to us from Lake Oswego after, um, a two-plus decade tenure over there. And he has been just thrilled with his experience here. Uh, we're very lucky to have him. He brings, uh, to us a unique amount of experience, um, including some very specialized skills like crash reconstructionist. And so that skill, that particular certification is not one that anywhere else we have in our department. And so he is a resource that local, um, other neighboring jurisdictions will call on. So when there are specialty events that go on and they need someone of his certification, Gladstone is now elevated on that list of, um, uh, just another resource to the other communities, which kind of just continues to foster those relationships we have and in turn nurtures that both ways. So, um, we're very lucky to have him and, um, I was very lucky to have that experience. Um, additionally, um, the only other thing I had was like Counselor Riechel mentioned, just thankful for that relationship we have with AMR at High Rocks. Uh, no reported deaths. That's wonderful. Um, let's keep that up. I know we'll get the opportunity to look at that, um, MOU we have with them later in October. But I just want to say once again how thankful I am for that. That's all.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Garlington?
Um, I was wondering, did they take the life jacket stand out too then? Is that, that's all going on as well for the season?
That is correct. That ends, uh, Labor Day.
That goes with it. Okay.
Yes.
So, all right, well, like Counselor Riechel said, boy, be careful down there because that's a scary body of water. Um, I wanted to bring up the fact that the, on the sixteen, Saturday, the sixteenth of September, they're doing the groundbreaking on the Oak Lodge Library. Um, they've supported, the, the Oak Lodge group has supported Gladstone really well in their, um, in our building of our library on our property. And, um, I hope that anybody that might maybe want an ice cream cone or whatever they're handing out down there might run down and just take a peek at what they're doing. It says it's scheduled for one to three. I'm not sure what time all the specifics are. Um, Saturday, September twenty-third is first day of fall. I'm sorry to see summer go, I'll say that. In October, the, on the same day that they're, uh, the, that they're having the Dog Fest, which, you know, a couple of people have already talked about that, that morning at nine fourteen AM is a solar eclipse. And the last time that we, uh, had that here in Gladstone, you know, we had a couple hundred people down at the nature park with their solar glasses on. Everybody needs to have those. And it was really interesting to see. And I think it's just a science thing for, you know, for kids to be able to see and, and that. So, um, don't miss that. You grab a chair and go outside at nine fourteen in the morning with your coffee. Well, I'd say get out there a little earlier because it's done at nine twenty-four. You got ten minutes. Um, Tuesday, October thirty-first is Halloween, and I understand from Haley that we're moving forward with that. So I'll be anxious to hear what all is going on there. I wanted to say thank you to the speaker that came for the annexation. I did not catch the person's name. I'm sorry. But I was really impressed with the fact that, um, they're very environmentally conscious on that. And I, I just wanted to say, I just think that's remarkable that you put that before the needs of, uh, you know, what might benefit your family more. And rather you're choosing to, you know, to take care of the environment in the city. And I, I really do appreciate that. I wanted that person to know that. And I'd like to just let Mr. Jacobs know that, you know, after working with you on the charter and working with you on the council rules, your professionalism is just, um, the highest of standards. And I really appreciate all the little things that we've gotten to add into there and making sure that all of our notes are taken and our Ts are crossed and our Is are dotted. So thank you for all of that. I, it's, it's truly been a pleasure and I, I do appreciate that. So that's all. Have a great night, everybody.
Thank you, Counselor. One of the fun things I get to do as mayor is, uh, occasionally be involved in, in some events that, uh, you know, marking milestones in people's lives. Uh, last week I got to attend, uh, an event at Somerset Lodge that was celebrating, uh, the one-hundredth birthday of a Gladstone resident named Betty Farley. Uh, she was born in nineteen twenty-three, about three and a half years before Charles Lindbergh made the first solo flight across the Atlantic Ocean. She was forty-six years old when, um, uh, Neil Armstrong walked on the moon. That was less than half of the life lived so far. Um, and, uh, I, 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 I got to thinking of all the movies that had been made, all the songs that have been written, all the music that's been composed in her hundred-year lifetime. Uh, she was a, a, a vital, uh, uh, very, um, active person. She wears reading glasses when she reads, but sitting there at lunch, she didn't need glasses and all the rest of us at the table did. Uh, so it was a fun experience to be there and to celebrate that. And I hope I'll have other opportunities like that in the future. Um, I serve as the, uh, uh, council liaison to the, uh, school board and have attended their, uh, meetings and was invited to participate in the event that they have during the, the week before school starts, where teachers get together and, uh, hear some speakers and, uh, you know, recognize one another for accomplishments. They hand out some awards to teachers that have done notable things. And, uh, I heard later, and I, and I, I spoke briefly at that event, uh, with some motivational positive things about the importance of teachers in the community and balancing their lives with their, uh, with their duties. Um, but I heard later from somebody that, that this year, that event really felt good to them. Uh, it was a positive experience and it's great for me as a grandparent of students. I told them that I am, uh, this, this year marks the fourteenth, uh, of what potentially could be twenty-six consecutive years of me having at least two students in the Gladstone, uh, school district, grandchildren, not my own children. Um, and as we've commented earlier, when Jeremiah was here, uh, this is a district where by having students in the, in the school system, you get to know other families pretty well. Uh, I spend almost every day, uh, at, uh, John Wetton Elementary, uh, having lunch with my second grade grandson and getting to know a lot of second graders and sometimes being out on the playground with them. And, uh, now after school, I see parents that say, ah, you're the mayor. My second grader knows you. That's kind of cool. Um, uh, and one of the events that happened that really made that, that event for back to school for the teachers a good one was that Sarah Sanderson did come and give a really good presentation about her book that sort of summarized, uh, the events that she was documenting and her personal family connection. She didn't realize until she started doing the history that she was related to some of the people who had a key role in a court case that, uh, where under Oregon's black exclusion laws, uh, a black person was, uh, expelled from the state of Oregon because he committed the crime of being black in Oregon, which was the, the law back in eighteen fifty-one. Um, it's, it's a very good book. It's gotten a lot of attention and, uh, I hope you will find it, uh, you know, choose it as one of the ones that you might use to help inform yourself more about, uh, our role in encouraging a diverse and equitable and inclusive community. Because, uh, she shares personal insights from her own life and, uh, and, and even from a very strong individual faith perspective as well, which you don't often see in a book that's, you know, that's, that's documenting historical events. So I strongly recommend it. Um, this Friday, I think it's Friday we're doing it, right? We have a tour, Jackie, with, uh, some folks from Metro. We're going to, uh, look at Gladstone. And, uh, we have seen so much progress this year already in, um, uh, the, in, in moving toward the goal that we had of economic development in our community with a new staffers and on hand and, uh, seeing businesses relocate and expand and new businesses proposing to come. And, uh, we're going to take these metro folks on a tour and show them what Gladstone is and what it could be, uh, in the future. And hope that we get support for, uh, some of the grants and some of the, uh, technical assistance that we need in making this community live up to even more potential, uh, you know, greater potential. So, uh, I'm looking forward to that. That'll be a lot of fun. Um, that's all I have for tonight. Uh, is there a motion to adjourn?
Seconded.
All right, it's been moved by Counsel Robert, seconded by Counselor Cook. Tammy, will you call the roll, please?
Counselor Huckabee.
Yes.
Counselor Alexander.
Yes.
Counselor Riechel.
Yes.
Counselor Cook.
Yes.
Counselor Roberts.
Yes.
Counselor Garlington.
Yes.
Mayor Milch.
Yes, we adjourned at nine PM.